Grab your attention, welcome to the zoning board of Kales meeting of June 24, 2025. My name is Attorney Russell Chin, I'm the Vice Chair. To my left is Mr. Himmel, Ms. Barry, Mr. Frankel, Mr. O'Brien. To my right is our Secretary, Ms. Kathy, Mrs. Griffin, thank you. Behind me is Robert Collins, the Director of Inspection Services. Okay, I'm gonna ask everyone to shut off their phones or turn the phones to vibrate so the meeting's not interrupted. And if you plan to speak this evening, if you plan to testify at all, you're going to need to stand up and take an oath that you're going to tell the truth. Okay, let's do that. So if you're going to speak at all this evening, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in the matters now and here. Thank you. Okay. I'd like to make, have a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting.
Make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from the previous meeting and accept them as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No. All right, under the old business agenda, we have ZB A 2520 Ward 3, JCBT Architect LLC for a finding in variance to change the use from a single family home to a two-family home with a two-story rear addition, reworking of the existing retaining wall to accommodate additional parking on the premises numbered 183 Norfolk Street Quincy.
Good evening, members of the Board. My name is Bonnie Tan with JCBT Architect, presenting 183 Norfolk Street. So the changes from last meeting, we reduced the gross living area by 635 square feet. From a two-family to a single-family, increased the setback, so the addition meets the setback. The only variance we're seeking today is FAR. And the parking also complies because we're putting it back to a single-family. It's still four parking spaces required for the single-family. So we opened up the existing house, first floor and second floor, so you don't think there's a rooming house at all. I mean, if it needed, I can open up more just with columns and steel beams, possible steel beams to support the existing house. So also the new addition in the rear, the number of bedrooms still remains the same, which is total is five bed, four full bath, and one half-bath. And yeah, my client reduces quite a lot in living area already, trying to meet the setback. So the addition is really needs a setback right now. And there is, I try to put in more parking spaces, but with the slope of the grade is really impossible. We already, we moved a lot of retaining wall in the front to, so basically, this is the existing driveway, but I should have a proposed. So this was the same from last time for the new retaining wall and the four parking spaces that we have. There's, we tried to push that further back to put more parking spaces, but being 12 feet and the height and grade, that's really hard. So we're proposing a total gross living area of 4,124 square feet on an 8,000 square feet lot, and seeking only FAR for .11 in variance, which is about 800 something square feet in variance.
So you'll end up with four parking spaces?
Four parking.
An increase from two?
We changed, we changed it from two-family to a single-family. So we, my client didn't need it to two-family, but building departments adjust with the layout like that, why might as well just change it to two-family, and that's what we did. The original submission was only one family.
Yep. Okay. Questions?
No questions at this time.
Can you tell us what you're doing with your existing kitchen? I see you've identified it as a wet bar. Can you be more specific on what's gonna happen with that area?
Um, let me pull that up. Right, so the plumbing is all there, so they don't really want to disconnect any plumbing, so they left a wet bar there and opened that all the way up to the second floor as we feel like having a wet bar there with a high ceiling.
What exactly are you going to have? It looks like a refrigerator, is there a dishwasher?
No, just a refrigerator and sink, no stove, no dishwasher.
So what is there, can you show us the plan of the existing kitchen?
This was the existing kitchen, L shape. So we terminate this right here, terminate that, take out the stove. They need new cabinets anyway to match the new side. So the sink will be somewhere along this side, probably right here in the refrigerator at that end.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I mean, we can go smaller if sizes matter.
Did you change the style of the windows? That was some of the feedback from the last time. Did you change anything on the exterior or the windows from the last time?
We changed, we changed the height, but we kept it a bit, I mean, it's still double hung, oh, sorry, not that. So it's still double hung to match, so it's, it's really matching. The only one difference is a picture window over there, I mean, over the front door, the side door, I would put it that way. We can add grills to make it look like it's a double hung, but there's no way because of height issue, there's no way it can be open even though it's the real double hung and we have fixed window.
I just look at the left side and the proposed rear elevation and the style of windows on your addition is completely different than the rest of the house. So it looks like two houses connected still, two separate units.
I mean, I can put more grills and the rear, does it matter on the rear?
I'm just pointing out, I know in the last meeting we gave you feedback that we didn't care for this style and the size and shape, and I don't see that that's changed.
Because I spoke to them, because the only side that they get the sun is the rear and the left side of the facade, that's the side.
I'm just pointing out that nothing's been changed, right? On the exterior style, you haven't changed the exterior look of this house at all. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
The window style, correct.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
No, I'm good for now, thanks. Okay. Anything else? Does anyone want to speak in favor of the application? In favor?
Oh, apologize, there was nine.
We already got that in the last meeting. There was nine previously, there were nine letters of support that was entered into the record at the previous meeting.
We entered those already last time we were here. Okay, call that meeting, that part of the meeting closed. Is there anyone here in opposition to the project? Okay, no opposition.
No.
Do we have any letters from DPW or any of that?
DPW, one letter of opposition, and the support letters were all read into the record at the previous meeting.
Okay, I think we're ready for a vote then, right?
Correct.
Okay, ready for a vote. My impression is that the applicant has gone back to the drawing board and done almost everything we asked, the aesthetics being the window, and I think I was the one who asked about the windows not really matching up. If you've gone back to a single-family and I'm happy that you have more parking spaces, the windows, I can understand that they want sunlight. There's been no opposition with the neighbors. Have the neighbors seen the drawings of the windows?
Yep.
So the back neighbors and the side neighbors have not objected?
No, they even signed the letter in favor.
In favor, so I'll be voting in favor.
Yeah, I still don't like what the windows look like. I wish you could at least put some kind of inserts in them or something.
Sure, we can do that.
Looks completely different than the existing house, and it still looks like two houses to me, but there appears to be no opposition, so I'll be in favor if in fact we put it to the record that you'll fix the windows.
Sure.
I agree with, with Mr. Himmel. I'd like to see the windows to be more matching and consistent with the existing home, and I would vote in favor with that condition.
Okay, sure, we can do that.
Still don't love the design, but did what we asked, nobody's opposing it, that's why people should show up if they don't like what's going on, otherwise hold your peace.
Yeah, again, it's, it's a big lot and it's high, so, I mean, it's not a street impact that they have there, it's everything's behind it, which would make it a little bit more acceptable to me. If it was in front, obviously with the driveway, that'd be opposed, but I'm, I'm in favor of it the way it's presented tonight.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
ZB A 25-20 JCBT Architect LLC for finding in variance to change the use of a single-family home to a, in fact, a larger single-family home, additional reworking of existing retaining walls to accommodate additional parking on the premise numbered 183 Norfolk Street Quincy, with the addition that the windows in the new addition will be fixed to mimic the existing home. Make a motion to accept.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next matter is ZB A 2516 Ward 1, Brian Travers for variance to construct a farmer's porch on the front of an existing dwelling on the premises numbered 91 Aspet Road Quincy Mass. The applicant here.
Hi, I'm Brian Travers, I live at 91 Aspet Road, I've been there for about 12 years, going on more, done multiple additions to my house to try to make it better, and my family has grown, and now our last thing we're trying to do to complete our house that we both love living in is to put a full-size porch on our front and come out eight feet and have it look beautiful like the houses.
Just need to take a look at the drawing again.
So the porch will be open, it'll be wide open, yeah, somewhere to sit, watch the kids. The neighborhood's unbelievable, there's over 14 kids on our street, my kids are eight and six, they're out front all day, non-stop, never worried about a car coming down, it's just the fact to sit out there and have your coffee and enjoy seeing all the neighbors, it's the best, I think, area to live in Quincy, so, yeah.
Great, and the stairs gonna have to be moved?
No.
Gonna keep the stairs?
Keep the stairs there, yeah.
Okay, and the roof over the?
There'll be a roof over the whole porch, but again, it's not gonna be, it'll be, everything's gonna be wide open, we're not gonna put, it will not be covered whatsoever.
There's no living above that?
No, not at all, bedrooms are set back.
Okay.
No questions?
No questions.
Did a nice job with the house.
Thank you very much.
I don't have any questions at this time.
Okay, is there anyone in favor of the proposal? Counselor, I'd like to speak.
Dave McCaffey, 48 Whitney Road, Ward 1 Counselor, as Brian said, he's been in the, been on Aspet for quite some time. Couple of years ago, I think we did a mudroom, maybe a little bit less than two years. He's got a big family, and I think this is great, you know, that they stay, they wanna stay in Merrymount, they wanna stay in Quincy, and they love the neighborhood, so the small additions to some of the homes, and we've had quite a few, at least I have in Ward 1, is a great thing to see. No one's picking up and saying, we gotta get out of here, we gotta get a bigger home, let's add what we have here because we got a good thing, so I'm in full support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in favor, would like to speak? Call that part of the hearing closed. Nothing from the DPW to report. Is there anyone here in opposition to the application? Opposition? Hearing no opposition, call that part of the hearing closed, ready for a vote. I think it's a good project, and I would be in favor of it.
Auto motion. ZB A 2516, Brian Travers, a variance to construct a farmer's porch on the front of the existing dwelling on the premise numbered 91 Aspet Road Quincy Mass. I make a motion to accept as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Mike Cavares will be nominated.
I wasn't close here, I was close to him when I got the question.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, if you'd like to.
Okay, moving on to the next petition, ZB A 2518 Ward 4, Claudio Arojo for a variance to construct a 120-square-foot mudroom onto the existing structure on the premises numbered 85 Upton Street Quincy Mass is the applicant here. Could you step up, please? Could you state your name and your address for the record, please?
Vanessa Fabro.
Can you say that again for me, please?
Vanessa Fabro.
Can you spell your last name for me?
F as in Frank, A B R O.
F A V A R O.
85 Upton?
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could you tell us what you'd like to do?
Yes, so we are proposing a mudroom, and our problem is going into the setbacks.
Could you just pick up a little bit more? I don't know if your mic is working that well. Pretty hearing.
So we are proposing a mudroom, and our problem is going to the setbacks, three feet, and we're gonna use that as a second entrance to the home.
So what type of relief are you looking for tonight?
The setbacks.
The setback?
Correct.
Okay. You're looking for a relief on this left-side setback?
Correct.
And it is currently 17.72?
Correct.
And it's going to, your proposal is to reduce it to 8.25?
Yes.
And the ordinance requires 13, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Your contractor submitted something to us that said he was looking for a three-foot discrepancy, a three-foot deficiency.
Yes, that is correct.
But I think the numbers don't really match up with the actual.
Not a three-foot setback.
It's more.
It's more like a five-feet setback. Yeah, just want to make sure I understand what it is you're looking for, because the documents don't have.
Yes, no, I was under the impression it was only three feet.
Is your contractor here?
I'd say 8.25.
There. The difference of 9.47 feet, which is significant when it's only a 13-foot setback.
I understand.
We need to amend. It's 8.25 on the, on the.
On the plans.
I'm sorry?
It's 8.25 on the plan, using my magnifying glass.
The requesting 8.25, the existing is 17.72, and the difference is 9.47.
So the difference between existing and requested is 9.47?
Yeah, roughly half, cutting in half, basically.
So wait, what size is?
4.75.
Other dimensions on there?
Of the ordinance of 13. So she needs variance for 4.75, is what you're saying.
Yeah, from 13.
8.6. Yeah, 8.7. So it's existing. Yep. Yeah, that's about right, because if they wanted to take a little over eight feet, that's the difference, that's the, should be the length of the room. Okay.
All right, can you tell us anything about? All right, can you tell us anything about the construction of the mudroom?
Yes, can I have?
Yeah. Hi, sorry, I think there was a misunderstanding, my name's Daniel Pierce, I'm the owner of eighty-five Upton.
Okay.
She's representing the contractor.
Oh, she's the contractor.
Yes, sorry, that might have been a misunderstanding. Sorry, can you repeat your question one more time? On the mudroom.
On the mudroom, what are you planning to build?
Yeah, pretty simple, we are looking to build a mudroom on the left side of the house, if you're facing it from the street. We bought the house almost four years ago after renting in Wallaston, prior to that. Anyway, four kids and honestly, we just want a place where shoes, backpacks, and jackets can go. And so there is wanting to build the ten-by-twelve mudroom, ten going out from the house, if that makes sense. Was the idea. Yeah, I'm not sure where the three-foot thing came from, I don't know what that was all about.
Well, it says eight and a quarter. It used to be, or it's currently seventeen?
Yeah, I think.
And you're going on ten feet, so that's gotta be seven.
Yeah, I don't have it in front of me, I think if I remember, the architect who drew up the plans used, and forgive me, I forget the name of the, it's online, is it GSI? Or GI, whatever it is, you know, it's a measuring tool. I might have forgotten, and it came at like nineteen feet. When the assessor came out, it was seventeen point eight or something like, I can't remember, you have, I think you have the number there from the assessor. And so if there's a discrepancy, it'd probably be a foot and something on there that I don't, that we didn't realize was there until the assessor came.
How big is the room? How big is the addition exactly?
The addition would be ten by twelve.
So, ten wide?
Ten feet, yep, ten wide and twelve deep, yes.
Ten towards the line.
Okay.
Yeah, ten towards the neighbor's house, if that's helpful.
So it's really seven?
Yeah, so it's, I think it comes out to, and I'm saying ten, yeah. So I think it's just under eight feet.
Okay, so you're gonna end up with about a seven and a half foot setback?
Something to that effect, yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna be a part of the footings.
Yeah, we'll do the footings, we're not gonna do a, we're not gonna dig.
Do you have a stamped site plan, did you have a site plan done?
Yes.
We're distracted because the numbers aren't.
Is it not in there?
It's not clear.
Yeah, like I said, the original, the plans that we submitted for the permit were done on the architect who used that computer program to measure, but the actual assessment was different by a foot and change. I think the assessor, the assessor, is it, it should be in there, is that correct? Yeah, let me see.
You have to be able to rely on what the setback actually is, so your neighbor can rely on it.
Yep.
So have you actually had a proper survey done?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and that should have been submitted. I mean, I'm not the expert here, so I don't know what I'm looking for. That's all from the architect.
If your existing condition is right, at seventeen point seven-two and your room is ten feet, then you'd be, you'd be down to seven point seven-two and not eight point two-five.
Right, so I think that's the difference between what the architect thought and what the assessor came up with. So it'd be seven point seven-two.
Requested condition?
Yes.
Against an ordinance requirement of thirteen. Okay.
Yeah, okay, I have that on me.
And you gotta have a deck up there too, right? On top of the mudroom?
No, that's just purely stylistic, to have the, the.
The railing?
The railing, yeah, we're not gonna do a window. There's a window from our bedroom, but it's, we're not gonna open it up to them, it's just aesthetic choice.
Could you share your plans with the neighbor on that side?
Yeah, we haven't, we have talked to the neighbors, honestly, that neighbor, we haven't seen them in over a month. He's there frequently, it's another couple, they're retired, I think they have a house on the Cape, we haven't seen them in a while.
Right, okay.
So.
You mean, this would impact them the most?
Oh, I agree, one hundred percent, yeah.
And we're off a foot, we can't find that extra foot based on your stamped drawing?
Yeah.
From your, from your engineer?
Okay.
Versus what you're showing here?
The drawing, the engineer meaning the, the?
Person who stamped your drawing that you submitted to?
Okay, yeah.
Showing an eight point two-five, right? Difference between the building and the side?
So it'd be seven point seven-two?
Correct. But the stamped version says eight and a quarter, but the dimensional page, pages say it's going to be seven point seven-two. So we're.
Because it's ten, the building's ten feet.
Because the ten feet, because the existing is ten feet wide.
It should be seven point seven-two, not eight point two-five.
Difference five, four, five, three.
Or take a subtract.
Yeah, because that would be nine and a half or something, right?
Eight point two, seven point two, five point three, difference.
Yeah.
So what do we do with the neighbor?
The neighbor was notified through the butters notice and they have not contacted the zoning board and they have not appeared this evening. So there's nobody in opposition, technically, nobody in opposition. I can, I can make this part of the conditions to make it reflect the stamped plans?
Correct.
And make sure that the math is right and the conditions, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I would prefer that.
Yeah, the stamped plans, though, are gonna require eight and a quarter, which is, they're not gonna have, so they need to, I think it would be best for everybody if got a new set, a new plan with accurate numbers that we can, we'd have no problem, we don't have any problem with what you wanna do. But your neighbor, the city, everybody's gotta rely on these numbers.
Sure.
So I think getting one that's accurate, so we can put that in the record.
Maybe we'll put it over for two weeks?
Whatever, whatever, they're just kidding, whatever, you know, whatever next, how long will it take to get a clean, uh, clean and accurate?
A new set of plans?
It's probably the plot.
Probably not very long.
It's probably the plot.
Sure, yeah, I ha, I mean, the plot plan, maybe I'm just confused about what all, what ones we're talking about, yeah.
So you have a dimensional form that you submitted and this is your plot plan, they don't match?
Sure.
So we need, we need a stamped drawing that matches this information, or vice versa.
The dimensional form, I imagine, was submitted when we applied for the permit, is that correct?
Correct, and that's what went out to your neighbors.
Sure.
So they may not be opposing it at?
At eight and a quarter.
But now when it is reflected to seven and a quarter, they may oppose it.
Got you, I, that makes sense now, thank you, okay.
So we need these two things to match.
Okay, so the, really, it's the submission, the dimensional and all that needs to be updated.
This probably is not correct.
Something's wrong.
Based upon what you've told us, it's one of these numbers is not accurate. So whatever it is, it is, but let's have it nailed down so that it says, here's what we're building and this is actually from the lot line to the end of your building, what that amount is, seven and a quarter, eight, whatever it is. Then your neighbor knows what they're, what they're getting.
Yeah. Yes, that's, that's, that's great, I don't have any problem. Certainly not trying to sneak it in, I don't know, I'm just going with what we, what we're told to do. Yeah, yeah.
When you get an assessor's.
We'll need the revisions by July eleventh in order to be heard on July twenty-seventh or second, twenty-second.
Okay.
So July eleventh submission, July twenty-second comeback for the hearing.
Okay, yeah, that's great.
So that the numbers match up?
Okay.
Between your stamped drawing and the dimensional forms?
Okay.
So we know exactly what you're looking for.
That's great, so just to make sure I understand correctly?
Yeah.
I should probably, I'll reach out to the, the architect who kind of drew up the plans.
You can have these.
Uh, yeah, I actually.
This needs to match this form.
Yes, so this, the, the plot plan here is really what we should probably go on, is that correct?
If that is, if that is in fact correct.
Yes, that's what the.
That's the stamped one.
That's, that's the one that was done by an assessor, so I'm assuming.
You need a registered land survey.
Yeah, that's what, that's what this guy, yes.
But from what you're telling us, what he has there is not right.
Is not what you submitted on your form?
It's off by a foot.
Well, so, but again, the form was based off of, and I forget, I forget the name of that computer program, so the question is, which one is, are we going on?
The stamped drawing.
That's, that's what I would say, okay.
So we need a form that matches the stamped drawing.
That matches this one, great.
And then you could amend that dimensional form.
Yeah, that is not a problem, that really shouldn't be very hard, so July eleventh is not a problem, no.
Okay.
July twenty.
So the, so the revisions need to arrive to me by nine A, before nine AM on July eleventh and you will be placed on the July twenty-second agenda.
Okay.
You'll be continued, I'm going to send you that information on the portal, but if you have any questions, please just call the something office and I will help you.
Okay, so July twenty-second, okay, and if I'm not able to be here, the contractor can be here and that's fine, is that correct? Okay, okay, I appreciate it.
Is there anyone else here present tonight on this particular application? No, okay, so we'll just have a motion to continue then.
EBA dash twenty-five eighteen Claudio Rubio for a variance to construct a hundred-and-twenty foot, square foot mudroom on the existing structure on the premise numbered eighty-five Upton Street Quincy, make a motion to continue to July twenty-second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the next matter is EBA twenty-five twenty-one Ward one Anthony Scola for a variance and a finding to subdivide the parcel and construct a single-family home on the created parcel and relocate the existing garage on the premises numbered thirty-seven Narragansett Road Quincy. The applicant is here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you for having us this evening to present the proposal here. Again, my name is Rob Fleming, I'm an attorney with Fleming &amp; Fleming, I do represent the applicant Anthony Scola. Anthony is here with us this evening too, so if you have questions for him, feel free to ask him as well. Engineer was not able to be here this evening, he had a family, a family matter to attend to. Our architect Bonnie Tam, JCBT, I know you guys know Bonnie, she presented earlier tonight, she is with us this evening as well as the architect. So again, the property is thirty-seven Narragansett Road in the Merrymount area of Quincy. This is a corner lot on Narragansett Road and Agawam Road, consisting of approximately just shy of fifteen thousand square feet lot in a Residence A zoning district. It is currently improved by a single-family residence to the east-fronting Narragansett Road and, and a one, one garage presently in the proposed vacant lot fronting Agawam Road. That garage will be moved to the thirty-seven Narragansett lot. The proposal again this evening, designed by JCBT Architects, is to again divide the property into two parcels. One parcel, fronting Narragansett Road, which will be, continue to be thirty-seven Narragansett Road, will consist of approximately seven thousand six hundred and one square feet, so just shy of, of the requirement per ordinance. Improved with the existing single-family residence and a garage, again, that garage will be moved on that particular lot. A second parcel, which will be, is now vacant land, essentially only houses the garage presently fronting Agawam Road, will consist of seven thousand three hundred and fifty-eight square feet, which again is, is just shy of the required ordinance lot size. This proposed single-family residence, and Ms. Tam can get more involved in talking about that, will contain three bedrooms and three bathrooms. Relief sought this evening from, from the board, again, we are not requesting a different use, it's Residence A, we're, we're proposing a single-family residence on a new lot. We are requesting variances minimally for lot size, as I, as I talked about, as well as lot size per dwelling unit. So again, lot size will be seventy-six oh one and seventy-three fifty-eight. We are requesting frontage relief for the new parcel on Agawam Road and minimal relief on, on the side setback for the existing home, a little over ten feet as opposed to the required thirteen. We are also requesting a finding, it is a non-conforming residence, so obviously we are changing that. So we do feel with the work that will be done, we'll certainly improve this property as well as the, the new property as well. So I'll just have Ms. Tam say a few words with respect to the architectural, did you have any questions for me?
Good evening, members of the board, my name is Bonnie Tam with JCBT Architect. We're proposing a two-story, single-family on the new lot, so the existing Narragansett property, we're not doing anything except just to detach twenty-four by twenty-four two-car garage on, we're moving the, the existing two-car garage that was on the Agawam Road side and moving it to Narragansett side. Sorry.
Bonnie, are you moving that garage, are you going to demolish it and put a new one there?
Put it away, we're demolishing it and rebuild, because that, that is actually a pretty big detached garage to car at the new lot side.
So you're taking it down?
Taking it down.
Good.
So the, the basement will be half, because it's a walkout basement, so we're proposing a half bath with a finished playroom with a half-finished walkout basement and the other half will be unfinished mechanical storage on the left side, that's unfinished, the right side is finished. And the first floor will be living dining kitchen with a guest bedroom and one full bath on the first floor. We wanna open floor plan as, much as possible. The rear will have a, a small deck overlooking, because it's sloped down, the, the gray slopes down in the back. And I believe it's a, was it a school? I, I believe it's a school in the. Yeah, in the back. Right, so it has some view on the second floor. So we're, we're proposing just two-bedroom on the second floor with a rear patio door overlooking the view of a partial marsh in the back and two full bath on the second floor. So the total living area for this new single-family is thirty-four hundred square feet, low, over thirty-four hundred square feet. And this, this existing single-family, I mean, sorry, the new single-family meets all the setback requirement, the height, everything zoning-wise, the only thing that doesn't meet is the lot size. And the existing single-family, other than the front yard and side yard, is only one side yard where the new lot line cut that was shy for two point something feet, little less than three feet. Everything else meets the zoning ordinance otherwise for parking and high number of stories.
Can you speak to the neighborhood, they, have their lot sizes generally speaking around this house and the size of the houses in those lots?
I, I could speak to that, I always looked at, at that as well. Many, there's a few lots that are larger than these two proposed. However, the, most of them are point one-one acres, you know, which, which you're looking at six thousand to seven thousand square feet. So the two lots that we're proposing here are really in, in conformance with the, with the rest of the neighborhood, with respect to size, overall size.
What about the size of the homes in those lots?
Similar in size as well to this, they're, they run from twenty-five hundred to, to three thousand square feet. I think Mr., Mr. Scola lives in the, in the home at thirty-seven and it's around that, around the same dimensions, I think.
And in terms of the components and the materials that you plan to use for the two houses?
Exterior materials? I'll, I'll have Bonnie.
Uh, we're proposing hardy siding.
Got that one down, Pat.
Do you like that, do you like that? You prefer vinyl, we can do the luxury vinyl, if the board buys it. Yeah, I mean, hardy. Yeah, I mean, hardy is the most economic cost right now, yeah, I mean, the regular vinyl is too cheap in luck and the composite or luxury vinyl is a little bit higher end.
So it'd be horizontal hardy plank, is what you're saying?
Horizontal, yes.
It'll look like clam wood.
Yes.
Nice windows, used to use those in Northwalk.
You're demolishing it, sir?
Yeah.
I'll let the owner know.
Yeah, I have no other questions.
I have no questions, thank you.
Um, the owner of the parcel, they're going to stay in one of these homes or they're both going to be sold, what is the ownership status? This is the owner?
Anthony Scola, there.
Anthony Scola, thirty seven Narragansett Road. We do intend to stay at thirty seven Narragansett Road and we'll be selling the lot next to us.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Scola, so you're gonna build it and then sell it, right?
Who's building it, are you gonna sell the plans?
I'm gonna sell the plans.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have a buyer lined up at this time or this is all conceptual?
This is all conceptual and I'm planning to list the house, the lot with the plans for sale.
With approved plans?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I'm good, thank you.
That's a beautiful lot there, not only, not only are we close to, to letting that be subdivided, but such a close, I'll, I'm okay with it. I don't have any, any questions.
I mean, I feel the same way, Rose, generally neutral reaction with me is not to subdivide it, but you have plenty of land and it's a corner lot and we'll, we'll find out if there's opposition as well as hear from the council. So anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the project? Come up and state your name and your address, please.
Ted Burke, twenty five Narragansett Road, I'm the neighbor to Tony, Fort Isworth, great neighbor, great people, fully support the plans, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in favor, project council?
Dave McCarthy, forty eight Whitney Road, Ward one councillor. I, I talked to Mr. Scola months ago when he first brought this up to me and I was excited that, as councillor Fleming said, there's fifteen thousand square feet, very rare, usually I'm up here and we're talking five thousand, six thousand, this is like the ponderosa, so I'm very excited about this. In regards to, in regards to, to the setup, the Scholers have been there for a number of years, they're great neighbors, it's a great neighborhood and when he does sell a house next to Merrymount School, in that Merrymount section, it shouldn't take too long for that to disappear. It's on a, a good sized lot, as councillor Fleming said, very comparable to everyone, probably even a little bit bigger than most of the lots on Agawam going down on the left side. I know there's a few to the right that are bigger by the tennis courts and et cetera, but this looks like it'll fit right in and I was very pleased to see the size and that we were very close to the conforming number, give or take a couple of hundred square feet, so I'm full support. Thank you.
Thank you. No opposition received in the mail, is there anyone here opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, none, okay. This is a letter to be written.
June tenth, ZBA twenty five twenty one dash thirty seven Narragansett Road, only vote appealed, receive the copy of a written communication from City Quincy DQW Engineering Department of the applicant responsive to this application dated five thirty twenty twenty five document is available to public and reviewed ZBA website. It will become part of the decision on this application.
All right, so if someone wants to read that letter, it's gonna be available on the website. All right, I think we're ready for a vote.
I have a question.
Motion. Oh, your question.
Well, I have a comment.
Yes.
Rob, do we know if they can have a curb cut? When was the road last paved?
No idea, we'll do the engineering part.
Okay.
Yeah, it was two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
Agawam, was that paved longer than that? Oh, it was okay, yeah.
My comment is that it's, it's a nice big beautiful home where you're gonna store all the bikes and the shovels and the snow blowers and everything else, so I would like to see some, a one-car garage or a quite proper shed included in the plans.
For Agawam.
For the new home.
Is that something that the applicant can agree to?
We, we can propose that, but I believe there is, in the rear, there's a wetland back there.
Yeah, everything, everything being constructed is outside the flood plain, I just have a question on, on what it is you were liking to propose or?
So this is a home that's most likely gonna be occupied by families.
Yeah.
And people with a home that size have stuff that typically goes in a garage, so where will all that stuff get stored under your existing plan?
So there's a half of a basement, that's why we left half a basement as a unfinished storage, this size, and that's a walk-in basement, if they do have lawnmower.
Per your plan though, you have people walking through their finished space to get to the unfinished space, so that's not practical.
Correct, or we can just enlarge this a little bit and have a door right here so they can just go in into with any, a ram, push the lawnmower in, or, yeah, so we.
Where on the plan could you possibly build a garage or a significant size shed?
Garage, we would love to, we originally proposed a garage in the basement, but the engineer said because of the gray varies and the flood plain, so we cannot put a garage in the basement, having it the left side driveway.
I think it might have been a water table issue.
Okay, do you have, do you have a plan showing the water table?
I don't have that and the engineer did not comment today. Do we actually, I don't have a civil, do we have a civil plan from him? I don't think we have a civil plan from him, it's more of a plot plan from him. So there's no drainage design at the moment, but it will, once it's submitted to, for permitting, it will have drainage design, but even my client here, he loved to have a garage, but it just doesn't work. If we propose a garage coming in from the front, the house will reduce in size quite a lot, or we'll be seeking for side yards.
We just need a practical solution to where all the stuff that homeowners are going to have are going to store.
There is a basement, which will be used for that.
Attorney Fleming, no one's gonna bring a lawnmower through finished space to store it in the basement.
Well, like I said, we can enlarge or move this walk, our basement area over.
I'd like to see a change in your walkout, so for practical purposes, the other side of the basement would in fact be used for typical things that homeowners have in need.
We could try to make the condition that we extend the exterior area to be able to access to, to the unfinished basement directly from outside. I don't, I don't mind proposing a condition to do that, so you have access directly and not have to go through the, through the living area.
Exactly, I'd like a practical solution, so you truly could get a lawnmower in the basement, you're not pushing a lawnmower through occupied space.
Understood.
Can we condition that instead of coming back, just for?
Yes, we can do it as a condition.
Thank you.
So it's gonna be an extension of that currently proposed.
That, that's correct, yeah, so you have direct access to that area of the basement.
Okay, sure, are there any other comments or questions?
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, do you have a motion then?
ZBA twenty five dash twenty one, Anthony Scola for variance and finding to subdivide the parcels, construct a single family home on the created parcel, relocate the existing garage on the premise thirty seven Narragansett Road Quincy. It's a recommendation that the Agawam parcel, that a second way of egress to access the storage section of the basement be added.
Direct egress.
Make it part of the conditions.
As a condition of approval, correct?
Thank you.
Second?
Second, are you in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None.
Thank you.
Take a motion to a jury.
All right, so what do we need for the next one, just this one, extended?
Boy, Courtney, they get out of here quick, huh? I did.
I said aye.